Hey everybody, welcome to this video by A+ College Ready. I'm Mr. Cole and
I'm Mr. Lambert and we are ready to bring you some enlightening information on
Forces.
Yes.
So I know you guys have got a start already in the year, but hey, let's jump in here today. I got a marker.
Well, I got a marker.
Let's get on. Let's take advantage of this thing.
We got forces. Also, we hope that you can, you know, this is gonna be all about what you and what you need to know. And too bad we can't interact directly, but hopefully we'll bring something in a way that you haven't seen it before. That'll open up an avenue in your brain and you'll be rocking.
Oh, I promise this video won't be like any of the others you've seen.
It will not have. And you're rolling off, no pun intended, a whole unit on kinematics and how things accelerate and how they move and how they're displaced and not much information about why they do what they do. But today, forces is gonna help you explain why things behave the way they do and why they might wanna change the way they're behaving.
Yeah, cuz that's what's kinda neat. We start off with kinetic. We talk about it kinema. We start off with kinematics and we talk about acceleration, but we never talk about like what caused the acceleration. So it's, it's kind of interesting the way most physics courses lay out that we study that motion and then study the reason behind those motions.
Which I, you know, all be said, if you can master this, I know we always talk about you know the difference between velocity acceleration is kinematics, but if you can master forces, it feels it. I mean, it applies to everything else that you're gonna encounter this year.
So basically, in general, what is a force if we were just to define it?
Force is really how things interact. It's a description of how two objects can interact with one another. And they're always coming in pairs because there's always two forces. One for one object, one for the other. When they interact, A, you push on the wall, the wall pushes on you.
And so that's what we're gonna be looking at in this video today, not just looking at forces, but looking at the interactions between them and we'll also be looking at the units used in those forces as well. But we'll talk a little bit more on this in a minute.
The unit is much, much tied to a very famous physicist who may have did some thinking about this.
Albert Einstein?
Not Albert. No, second most famous physicist in all of physics.
Jason Cole?
Sir Isaac.
Ah, okay, not me.
There it is. Boom.
So if you're in a course, one of the first things you start learning is Newton's laws of motion. And so to begin with, when I hear first law, you know what I always think about? I always think about like space shuttles and that concept of the free ride is what pops into my mind.
I don't, I don't have like inertia, like things that like running into something that's kinda lethargic or you wouldn't really wanna hit, you know, things and do what they're gonna be keep on doing. And this was probably misunderstood more than anything. A lot of the language we use to describe Newton's laws of motion, which really could easily be called Newton's laws of forces, is in the language cuz this language is very specific. When it says first law, it means objects in motion remain in motion in a straight line, which implies two things. One, the magnitude's not changing and two, the direction's not changing.
So you know what? I'm going back to my space shuttle analogy from before. Technically, is there ever a time in which the space shuttle or something in, if it's in orbit, it's not experiencing a free ride?
No, it is not.
I used the word orbit there.
Orbit, to me, I had a vision circle.
Yeah.
And then circle world, things don't, that's not natural.
It takes a force to make something move in a circle.
Most definitely does.
Wow. I feel like we're tearing things apart already in a day.
We are killing it. So we will dive into that. We'll have lots of opportunities to talk about Newton's first law and how it interacts.
But usually when I think about Newton's laws, it's Newton's second.
Oh, for sure. It is like the meat and potatoes of the Newton's law. Cuz it's, uh, it's where, you know, the math meets the concept. Because it's all concept with the first law. You don't have to do a lot of calculations for that one. But if you wanna know if something's accelerating in the rate or magnitude of its acceleration, you better know some Newton's second law to apply to that.
And that's where all our calculations are coming into. We're gonna start looking at that relationship between force, mass, and acceleration. And that's what's critical, the understanding, most of the problems we're doing. And one more big word, net force.
Oh, for sure. When Newton's second law sometimes is, you know, haphazardly or just carelessly thrown out there is force equals mass times acceleration, but that force is not just any force. It's a very specific force as Jason's alluded to here, Mr. Cole. It's a net force. It is after you sum all the forces acting on an object, whatever the net is, is the net force acting on that specific object.
So ultimately, you're saying the acceleration's going to be in the direction of the net force?
For sure. It's, it's a, it, F equals ma is a vector equation and the force net and the acceleration are always in the same direction.
So what about Newton's third law? How would we summarize that?
That third law really summarizes the behavior and nature of forces. For every force, there's an opposite and equal force. And one thing I don't like to say is for every action, there's an opposite and equal reaction. Cuz to me, if I push Jason, he's gonna react, but it's gonna take a little time.
I'm gonna react by punching you.
That's right. And so we don't want, it's not a delay. It's the ultimate concept of Newton's third law is that there's never a delay. They're always simultaneous. I guess this is the word I'm stretching my grasp for. For every force, there's an opposite and equal force means that that's how forces are.
Well, I feel like the biggest thing is like, we'll start talking about in this message today, we'll talk about normal forces.
Yep.
And I feel like that's often misconstrued as Newton's third law. That when I'm standing on the floor, I'm pushing on the floor and the normal force is an equal and opposite force to what I'm pushing, but that's not what a normal force is.
No, it is not. With, one thing you can do is, uh, the definition of what the, what the reaction or what the other force will be is always in how I describe the initial force. So if I push on the wall, just reverse my words, the wall pushes back on me. Or if a freight train hits a car, the car hits the freight train. There's always interaction between two objects and they're always in opposite directions, the forces are, and they're always equal in magnitude.
So the time somebody broke my nose with their fist, in theory, you're saying that my nose exhorted an equal force back against their fist?
Yes, but the key to that lesson is if you're getting in a fight, don't beat up people with your nose. Oh, he just, he, he who punches with his nose loses.
Yeah, I lost. It, it was bad.
I've had it happen to me. I got hit with a Spider-Man lunchbox once in altercation on a bus and that doesn't go well.
He not going into the.
No, that's terrible. Alright, we're gonna move on and hopefully this.
Cuz you guys probably wanna know more about solving the problems.
I can't help but think that they are chomping at the bit to learn about this stuff. Alright, so we got lots, we got a plethora of examples and one that kinda shows its face a lot. We even have a lab that we do quite often with physics classes called weight versus mass.
Aren't they the same thing?
They are not, but the mass can be, they are related, strongly related. And so that if you think about Newton's first law, how do you measure the inertia? Well, mass is a measure of inertia. So it's intricately just tied. It's not a force, but it's intricately tied to how much resistance to change something's gonna have, whereas weight is an interaction between a gravitational field normally and what the object's mass.
And I like what you said because a lot of times people, the formula we can say is the weight equals mass times gravity. And one of the things that gets me, a lot of people write gravity is equal to nine point eight meters per second square, which is the acceleration due to gravity. But really, when I'm thinking about a force due to gravity, which is what weight is, I'm thinking about that gravitational field in Newton's per kilogram exerting on that object.
Which sounds like Jason, Mr. Cole's talking about crazy topic, like force fields.
Force fields.
We live in one and you wake up every day in one and it would be an odd world if you didn't have it. And we can test it whenever you want to.
That just moved.
Yes, and that is an idea that, hey, if that didn't happen, you'd think either that's a video trick or we're not on earth anymore.
It'd be a video trick if it went up.
Yeah, like.
Whoa.
Nothing but camera tricks. Nothing but camera tricks. So that notation, Mr. Cole's talking about a Newton per kilogram, that is a gravitational field strength notation. It's how many Newtons you get per kilogram of mass. And it's the same thing equivalent to fundamentally a meter per second square because it's gonna drive, it's gonna simplify, definitely spit down to that. And that's gonna be where you get the idea of a gravitational field strength.
And, but we've also got other types of contact forces such as frictional force.
Oh, yeah.
We'll take a look at in this. We've got normal force. Now, it's kinda funny. Normal force, most people write like that. Uh, if you were actually taking my class, I would
Alright.
Just write the lowercase letter N and it kinda depends on your teacher.
Perfectly good. I think AP's nomenclature or sign notation on that is F sub N. But it doesn't, as long, as long as you're consistent and, uh, the physics is applied in the proper way, you can do that.
So what about weight? How would that be on the AP exam? Would that be?
MG's perfectly acceptable. A lot of people use force-gravity, some people use FW.
FW. But the big thing is MG.
You're not gonna go wrong with this one. You name it, how you draw it or how you actually calculate it. It's, it comes in handy too when we start to break it down into its components. Alright, applied force, that's too generic to, I know it's used a lot as sloppy language because sometimes if you, if I, everybody's just saying it's an applied force, but I don't say what's applied to or who applied or what's applied about. It could be anything. It's not very specific unless you have a drawing with it labeled on there.
I was often accused of not applying myself in that.
Oh, yeah. I can, for, for me as well. The other thing that would be important to know is that the vector nature of forces is gonna let you use the notation of using an arrow to designate where they go.
Nice. What about non-contact forces? Cuz everything we've been so far, like, like for example, friction. Friction exists because of the interaction
Yep.
between these two surfaces in contact, but are there some types of forces that don't require contact?
Oh, there's, there's a bunch of them. And for the most part, this is trivia because in AP Physics 1, you're not gonna be asked about any of these specific non-contact forces. They're not on the exam. And so it's really trivia for you, but it's important trivia. Electromagnetic forces is really how everything mostly you've encountered that's you touched, you interact with.
But if you take EM next year.
You're gonna learn a lot about it. Um, you're gonna be, Maxwell's gonna be your friend. Maxwell is, is the Sir Isaac Newton of the force war, of the force field world. He has lots of great equations to describe that. And these other two on here, the strong and weak nuclear force. If you wanna be a quantum physicist or you wanna work on a nuclear submarine, you're gonna be happy as a lark on those. The strong for sure is the blue that holds the nucleus together and the weak, I'm gonna exhaust everything I know about the weak force really quick here. It shows its face during nuclear decay, the weak force does. And then other than that, the two key lead actors are the electromagnetic and the strong.
Nice. We're gonna journey on through this. Oh, my goodness, look at this, look at this. So is there a difference between friction then is what I'm kinda seeing here?
There are flavors of friction for sure. There's some static friction and there's some dynamic friction, which sometimes we call kinetic.
So static in general is when something is locked.
Yeah, if we could, funny if we should just have a block of wood in our ramp.
We had a block.
Look at this. Right now, I don't know if you can see it in the plane of the video, but I'm just gonna give it a little, ooh, that does not. But it's sloped towards Mr. Cole and without friction, if that were greased ice, that block would be on its way down. So right now, static friction's holding that. Well, if I keep on tilting it, eventually the block will slide and kinetic friction will be interacting with it in the, the surface here and keep it from sliding as fast as it would if there were not kinetic friction. So kinetic friction is when the surfaces are sliding with respect to one another. Static is when they're not.
I'm noticing rolling friction on there, but I'm trying to remember if there's ever a discussion in AP 1 about what I would call pure roll.
There, uh, almost always, the, in AP Physics 1, you're not gonna have to deal with rolling friction other than treat it like it's static. Cuz static, if you, this is gonna be crazy, but if you think about this and you're on this, uh, you know, vision of what you have in your experiences, if you think of a car tire rolling down the road without sliding, the bottom of that tire at any given moment has zero velocity with respect to the ground. It's actually not moving at all.
So what if your car tire had no friction?
Eee, that would be a bad day. First of all, someone to get in the car going would be very difficult, but if they, uh, if they were not there, then all bets are off. Your car tire could be doing anything with respect to the road. As long as it's rolling without, um, sliding, then the bottom of the tire is concerned to be in static, uh, conditions with the ground.
That's pretty cool.
Alright. Causes of friction.
And so as we start to get into friction itself, what it is, very common, we've already said it, FF. And then we get to this little, hey Eric, why you call a cat sliding down a roof? The problem was it didn't have enough mu. Mu, come on. This, it's getting thick in here. That's, that's, I, I can't even put that in the category of a dad joke.
One step below. The, um, the idea though, to tie it back in, we talked about electrostatic forces. And electro, and that electrostatic forces are really what cause friction to occur at the beginning. Interaction between two objects is really their electron clouds, right? That's out of the realm of AP 1, but important to know, that's what's going on. How rough are, are smoother surfaces really is how rough or smooth the electric field around that surface is.
So what we're kinda speaking about is this coefficient of friction. So really what causes that coefficient to exist between any two surfaces?
So that's, that's a great question. That's like spot on, number one. So two things that determine, one is it's, it's always determined experimentally. How rough or smooth the surface is, if it's sand or if it's polished or if it's really rough and jagged. And then the second condition would be what kind of pressure or how much force normal or interaction there's between the two surfaces? What force is pushing the two surfaces together and how is that, um, happening and what's causing it? So both of those ideas, how rough the surface is and how much force is pushing it together will determine how much force friction you have. Won't determine the mu though. The mu is always a dance between the ratio of the force of friction divided by the force normal. So it's a constant. And I think that's what Mr. Cole was alluding to. Mu for any two given surfaces, as long as they stay at the same roughness, will always be a constant. And usually almost always found experimentally. And you can do that by saying mu equals force-friction.
So if I increase the mass of this block, what's gonna be true then about the normal force and then the subsequent change in friction?
Or no.
Or would it, but, oh, good trick question. If I increase the mass of the block, would that change the coefficient of friction?
I would say if we, if you recall the definition we had earlier, that if you increase the mass of the block, it doesn't change the surface. So that's the same. And so only thing that would do is cause it to smoosh together more, have a greater force of contact, but would have no bearing whatsoever about the mu. It's self-adjusting. Because it's a ratio of the force of friction divided by the force normal, friction goes up at the same rate the force normal goes up or AKA the, the mass of the block goes up. And therefore, mu is not affected by how much mass you put on the block.
Nice.
And if you look at that, it's independent of mass, velocity, and surface area. All those are within, there's the caveat there. But for our purposes and for the course of AP Physics 1, then we consider mu to be a constant for the two surfaces, two forces.
Oh, wow. There's a lot of stuff on this slide. And it's so small that I don't know if you can read it, but we can take care of that. The big idea within this slide is the fact, not all mus are the same mus. That's the difference in the cat sliding down the bridge.
Not all mus are alike.
Right. So we have two different mus. We have a static and we have a kinetic mu.
Yep.
There's a difference based on whether something is static, not moving, or if it's kinetic, just like with the block we had a second again. If you've ever experienced this, tell me what happens. Like if I start pushing on this, what happens to the force once it begins to move?
So think about that. Uh, this is important to know and there's, this is the one equation that we have in physics that's an inequality that shows up in AP Physics 1.
That's actually crazy, yeah.
This is, force of friction static will adjust itself until it can't adjust anymore. And so once you start pushing on something, it doesn't, uh, hit you with its full force of static friction. It increases its static frictional force in proportion to your push until it can't do it anymore and it breaks free. At the moment it breaks free, the kinetic frictional force is less than the static. So there's a little chattering, a little bit of less interaction between the two surfaces. And so what that means is that crazy equation you see for force-friction static is less than or equal to mu static force normal. That means that force-friction static then adjusts itself up until it reaches the maximum and then it's gonna break the, the contact between the two surfaces, start sliding and it'll drop to a new coefficient, which is called the coefficient of kinetic friction.
Nice.
So in a nutshell, mu static is always greater than mu kinetic. That's our big takeaway from that.
Oh, wow. An incline. I, I love, and I love getting some on inclines. So essentially what we've got here is what you see in front of you at this very moment.
So let's just take a moment to grasp this. We're gonna talk about vectors and components of vectors, but this one already has them. This is kinda like a, a preview, like a preface to a big story.
We're gonna be talking about free body diagrams, so should these components already be labeled on the free body diagram?
It's either or. Alright, so here's what you're allowed to do on the AP exam. You're allowed to, as a matter of fact, you have to use components, but if it's a free body diagram, components will not be. They don't show up on a free body because.
So if I'm just looking at this, I'm gonna have my force of gravity acting now, right?
For sure. You got the weight, which is always straight down towards the center of the earth. You got a normal, the word normal in physics means perpendicular and perpendicular is always a surface force. And so it's always gonna add perpendicular to whatever surfaces of contact there are between the two objects.
So the normal force then perpendicular to the surface.
Notice it's not, there's no way that could ever be a Newton's third law force. We've already violated that cuz force normal is definitely not equal and opposite of this in this case. Sometimes it can be, which doesn't mean it's a, uh, uh, Newton's third law force. And here's how I can, before I get all crazy and weird.
Getting crazy.
Yeah. The, the reason why free body diagrams are free body diagrams cuz they only include the forces acting on one object. So in this case, we're only talking about the, the block is our object. So we got the normal force, which is the, the ramp pushing on the object, uh, pushing on the block. You got the weight pulling down. And then we have a, one other force is all we really have in this particular deal. And that would be if it's not sliding and the surfaces are rough, we have a frictional force.
So if it's not sliding, okay, so we'll put a little component backwards here. Is it sliding or not sliding? That's gonna change perhaps while I write. Force of friction.
Static for this situation.
I'll guess then.
And if you looked at this, it'd be without doing some, you know, law signs, all harder math, it would be difficult to sum these forces. But in this case, if this is true, you sum all these forces, you're gonna get zero in both directions, the X and the Y, which we'll get into a little bit later.
Yeah. I was gonna ask, why does this want to slide down the ramp though?
Oh, because if you think about it, well, practical experience with any ramp or hill that you ever encountered in your life tells you things go downhill, but there is definitely part of the gravitational force that's acting in the direction of down the hill. And there's also a component that's acting to kinda keep this thing on the surface as well. And those are what we call the components.
It's always been neat to me that the angle of the hill was also this angle when you do your, cuz that's ninety minus theta, which means that's theta.
That, that's interesting cuz we learned that in different ways. I learned that as, from construction and using a plumb bob. Because if you ever have a plumb bob, if that were a plumb line and that were a weighted line.
Yeah.
Then whatever the angle is, it's gonna determine the difference between the perpendicular to the surface and the plumb line, which will always be the, so if you bring this down, they become zero. You bring it all the way up, they become ninety.
And so if you're thinking of dropping physics and entering building construction.
We got you.
Stay tuned. We'll make that video too.
And you can, and we'll be making you some money. Alright, so net forces, I would say, I would go one step more detail than this. I would say net forces cause acceleration. An object could already be in motion and not experience a net force. It could just be coasting. But if an object is accelerating, for sure, there's a net force acting on it.
So what would you say then if this mg sine theta? Gee, it's very hard to write at this angle. What would you say if it was greater than, let's say, this force of static friction?
Oh, then this wouldn't be static for very long. You would overcome it, right? So if the force pulling this down the incline is greater than the force resisting, it's gonna break free and our static friction's gonna quickly convert to kinetic and we're gonna have an accelerating object down the incline.
And it means we've also gotten that force.
Well, for sure we do. And I think that might be the most direct answer. Alright, this summation formula, this sum sigma comes up a lot, right? And so you have lots of ways to interact with this and you have, uh, for sake of being able to do it mathematically, you have to separate the X and Y directions. And so you have the force, the sum of all the forces in the X direction, the sum of all the forces in the Y direction and collectively they'll determine what the object's gonna do in both of those dimensions. Luckily for you, I've got great news. You don't have to deal with Z. In, in physics AP 1, um, they only let you deal with two dimensions at a time. And they may talk about a Z direction, but you never have to calculate things in a Z, which would be the third dimension.
So what, what do you think is going on in this one?
Interesting. So we got a weight, we got a force normal. It looks like you got a force towards Mr. Cole over there, ten Newtons, and one towards me of five Newtons, which is definitely an unbalanced situation.
It's like a war, baby.
Yeah. Well, I'm losing big time. And so it looks like we got a five Newton net force to the right.
So our sum of the forces Y, if we're summing those up or doing our net, we would say that's what? FN minus FG. Ooh, maybe run off camera.
Very good.
That's equal to zero.
Yep.
What would be true about my sum of the forces X though?
You would have ten Newtons to the right. If we call right positive, this is gonna work out beautifully, right? Cuz we're gonna have a negative five plus a negative five to the left, which is just like minus five. And then we get a net force of five Newtons to the right.
And then what's neat was we could then set that equal to ma.
Yep.
We need to mass it out. We know the acceleration.
That would be all.
Hey, this is a handy thing, some of the forces.
And this is also the beautiful use and an example of a free body diagram. This is what free body diagrams, this is where they earn their money. Because they allow you to take the situation with an object and home in on just that one object and not get striked about the.
So what about on the AP exam, like a free response? What if they got the free body wrong, but they did their sum of the forces right?
Oh, they're talking about points.
Oh.
You gotta, you get points. And, oh wait, that is beautiful. And it's still there. The ghost of the, the beautifulness is still here. He, he terminated his forces on the dot and that's AP Physics 1, 101. You start your arrow on a dot that they give you, it goes away and you end it with the tip of the arrow at the end.
That's beautiful. Maybe I could pass the test.
I think you're ready to go. Problem solving strategies. Well, we just covered problems solving strategy one right there, free body diagram. It rules the roost. And then, uh, choose a direction of motion that you would call positive. And normally, don't reinvent the wheel. You've been, spent a lot of years learning algebra and normally we say to the right is positive, to the left is negative.
The only thing that kinda tricks people up though, and, and I could see it, is like when I work a problem and I'm dropping something, I typically make downward positive, which I know seems to be kinda the opposite to everything we do.
And for dropping, that perfect sense. And it's, I guess the key that you could say agree on is that whatever force that you call positive or whatever direction, stick with it. Do not deviate from that within the middle of a problem. If, if down is positive for you, then keep it positive throughout the entire problem.
If I had the ability right now, I'd hang upside down in this video just to show that it could even reverse.
If you could do that, I mean, we could tilt the camera, but we're not gonna do that to you. If there's a little noise in the background, it'll go away in a minute. No worries. Alright, so we got two situations that can happen for you. We got equilibrium, we got non-equilibrium situations. Equilibrium kinda means what the root of equilibrium is equal and that we're not accelerating. And so if you sum all our forces in the Y and the X direction, you get a big fat goose egg.
Whenever I think of equilibrium, I always think about this problem where you have an object suspended by two cables.
Oh, beautiful.
Like that.
Advanced, but very important.
Like a tension one and a tension two.
And you have a weight where you're coming down, the mg down here.
Yeah.
And equilibrium means that if you sum all those forces, you would get zero. And so these tensions actually have two jobs. One is they have two X components that they're equal and opposite to one another. And they have two Y components that sum to give you the weight of the object. So that's, that's impressive stuff. You can do a lot with that and we can get into that. I mean, this is, uh, an interesting thing to do if you ever get your car stuck in the mud and you tie a rope and you pull in the middle, but we'll get to that later. Dynamics definitely gonna be when the sum of all the forces is not zero and you're dealing with acceleration.
A lot like the block that we've already talked about. The second you broke your static friction, we had acceleration.
Doesn't have to be, but initially. Static friction, we had acceleration. Um, doesn't have to be, but initially it would be. You could, and we'll get into that, just the, the root of the solving problems, equilibrium means the sum of all the forces is equal to zero. Which doesn't mean it's not moving. That means it's not accelerating. And for dynamic, it means the sum of the forces is not zero. It's actually a number and it is accelerating, which means the velocity is changing in both magnitude and direction. And the direction of change is always in the same direction as the net force. Alright, we're, we've hammered free body diagrams like crazy.
Yeah, I feel like we're doing pretty good on that right now.
No net forces on free body, no, no, no. No components of forces on free body diagrams. They're used to, you wouldn't have a net force label either, but.
So are you saying then like on that object on the hill again, I would do my F G down.
Yep.
But are you saying that I shouldn't then draw my Y component or my two components?
No, that's great for your thinking, but terrible for the free body diagram.
Okay.
But you, you will always have work that you can set aside to work your problem. That's free from the free body diagram. The free body diagram is just a standalone depiction of what's acting on the object. And allows you to earn points. And so you don't pollute it with your other stuff. Keep those points and be happy. Oh, question one of the day. Yes.
You know what? I think it's their turn.
It is their turn.
I'm on set back. You wanna play tic tac toe?
Yeah. We'll be, we'll be all over this.
Okay, so we're going to assume you guys have already solved this problem right now. So we got what, a box on a horizontal surface?
And what could be more exciting than that?
I love a horizontal box. Matter of fact.
This is gonna be in the Christmas catalog. It'll be ready for order for the Christmas season. It's a stocking stuffer, if you will.
Might be our next tic tac.
Yes, it will. So you're gonna got a box on a horizontal surface and when it is pulled with a horizontal force to the right. It moves at a constant velocity to the right.
Oh, nice.
Constant velocity. A frictional force also acts on the object. Draw a free body diagram for the box.
You know, I always tell everybody to write this gravitational force first. No matter what the situation is, you know where that one's always going.
You're almost, always an earthling in these physics questions. And so you'll know where gravity's gonna be.
And then your normal force always perpendicular to your surface. So if you're on the hill or something of that nature, draw accordingly.
Listen to that. That's a, that's precise.
And then we have what? A force going to the right? I'll call it like an F A for a force. But it said something neat. It said constant velocity.
That means no acceleration.
So what's true about the sum of the forces?
It better get zero. So we got a problem here.
So I know there's a friction, but how long should I draw that arrow?
Proportionally, if it's gonna cancel out the force applied or the pulling force, it better be, um, graphically about the same length or proportionally.
Nice. Don't have a ruler, but not too bad.
And this, oh, let's, I hope you labeled it appropriately, cause it did say it's sliding. So this wouldn't be any, any flavor. It would be a very specific flavor of friction. Would it be the kinetic? The kinetic, kinetic friction on. Beautiful.
Let's see how we did.
Yeah, we even schooled the schoolers.
Look at that.
There's kinetic on their friction. They didn't put the flavor on there.
They should really try harder.
But they did use different.
We'll send a letter in.
Yeah, they put different colors on there and they, now they, we don't, we got, we got yum yum purple. So we're going. Alright. Here's number two for you. That aren't there. This class, this is a difficult task we're doing here. So alright, question two. We're drawing a free body diagram for both boxes, M one and M two. Um, are you gonna give me the hard one, the M one? And I'll, you take the M two?
It doesn't.
No. Alright, it's time for me to earn my keep. So here's my M one and there's your M two. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm, I'm gonna raise you an M G, baby. This is an M one G.
My strings, I'm not really.
It's got, it's got its memory string. They can, it's extra charged for that. But here's what we can do, just make the pulley a little.
Well, if you've got an M one G, then guess what? I'm gonna come in the middle of that and I'm gonna go, I'll counter your M one G. With an M two G.
M two G sounds bigger than M one. I'm gonna throw up a force normal.
Nice. I'm awake. I don't have a force normal.
Oh goodness.
But then is what's funny to me though, I've seen this Eric, like students will work, let's, let's do this. They'll work a problem that's like a block falling through the air. And they get so used to drawing a normal force, they draw a normal force in like every problem.
That's gonna be tough fun, cause the surface is gonna be very elusive.
If this is falling, pretend my hand's not here, video editing. Yeah, what's it setting on?
Nothing. So absolutely nothing. And so you don't got, you may be done. I may be still, oh wait, I'm gonna got a tension. I'm gonna throw a little tension here.
So if you've got a tension and this is a frictionless pulley. And by the way, if you're wondering, cause you're gonna keep saying that frictionless pulley, frictionless, massless.
Yeah.
Frictionless pulley.
And match the string.
That's just telling us that these two tensions are the same. And that's what would change. We would have a T one and a T two, should we have that? And before the year's over, you will have one like that.
And so something that's curious that I've always found that students kind of struggle with sometimes. If this is a static situation, it wouldn't be, cause I didn't draw no frictional force here, because it said that no friction adds. So don't have that. But if I'm gonna physically hold this block, the tension in that string would be the weight of M two. But because it's not, it's a dynamic situation, we're gonna see something else happen. The string is actually gonna be, tension's gonna be less than the weight of M two. Kind of this gets distributed over the two masses. Which we might see in a, in a, uh, question coming after this. But I feel like they may ask another question about this. Oh, look, here's our check from the professionals.
Now that.
We're killing it. No, we gotta work on that. But question two answer, which tension, tension, uh, all that great stuff. And, and one, M two, good. Question three.
Parachutes.
Oh, this is probably the most exciting question we've had to date, because we've had blocks and strings so far. And now we get a parachutist. Think now. Alright, now they've paused enough.
So question three, you guys take a turn. We're gonna sit here and talk again.
You didn't hear anything before. Hey, this is, this is life video. This is not, we don't make this up. This is in.
It's gonna end up two hours long. We've done a lot of good instructions.
We're still good. Sixty kilogram parachutist, that's the mass of the parachutist.
Are we going?
We're going now.
We're going.
We're gonna, we're, we're, we're in your mind.
Well, well, if we're going, then watch me draw this parachutist. This will be art AP.
And I'm over here on the side, I'm just gonna draw the parachutists like this, cause they're happy.
That's not a parachutist. Look at this. Boom. Look at that dot. That's beautiful.
And physics, dots are more friendly than objects that have a lot of different things going on. Sixty kilograms of fun romping stomping parachutists falling through the air. So we got some air. Four hundred and twenty-five Newtons of drag force is acting upward on the parachutists.
So alright, I got a drag force. Alright.
Which has some analogies to, uh, normal force, cause it's, it's caused by interaction, but it's not a surface. So that's why it's not called a force normal. It's caused by interaction with a fluid. And so we got a weight. This parachutist has gotta have a weight, right? There's sixty kilograms.
And I broke my own rule. I said I always draw the weight first.
And for sake of simplicity, you're allowed to use ten Newtons per kilogram for G. And so.
So he's sixty kilograms times a gravitational, what's that? Earth's gravitational field again?
Ten Newtons per kilogram.
It is in here. So we've got a.
Six hundred. Six hundred Newtons. You can see why at the doctor's office, they don't like to report people's weight in Newtons. Because most people would kind of be set back a bit if they step on a scale that says six hundred or a thousand or twelve hundred. So therefore we stay in pounds, which is a kinder, friendlier way to report your weight.
Some might think I'm crazy for that, but I like to write it.
I, I'm good with it. I love sigma. Sigma is your friend. Sigma used to be a cartoon character on like one of those weird PBS things. Not anymore. It was like in the, I, I'm way dated myself. It's like back in the seventies.
Now, I'm gonna do my thing again. This thing's falling. I'm going to make that my positive direction.
I'll keep us honest.
Okay, so we've got six hundred Newtons down.
Four hundred and twenty-five Newtons of resistive force due to the air, which looks a lot like a hundred and seventy-five. But in what direction? Well, if six hundred was up, it would be positive, but six hundred is, uh, well, six hundred is down, we call positive. So there we go. Oh, it's right there in front of us. So when in doubt.
Yes, we got it right.
Look at all this words. It's so good.
Roll us another one. I feel on fire.
Our question four is for you.
For me?
No, for them. Or do you think, how do you think they're, maybe an envelope that they?
Oh, they're watching this.
Sal was dotted the mail. Are they waiting for us to do all the work?
Speaking of which, should we be back?
Let's start doing.
Alright, I know you guys just did your head puzzles, so let's jump back in. Hey, I feel like I've already done most of the physics.
New physics, that one up, man. Still a sixty kilogram parachutist falling at same, same air, same four hundred and twenty-five Newtons. Four twenty-five Newton to drag. Now we wanna know more specifically, what is the acceleration of this parachutist?
I remember something. Does my net force is also equal to M A? So that means that's.
Wouldn't it be nice if that was one eighty and that, cause that was sixty and, but no, so we know it's almost three, right?
So yeah, one seventy-five equals, oh yeah, sixty. Times a, if it was one eighty, I would be on fire.
We know, but it's not there, but it's close.
We can estimate this.
I'm going, I'm feeling a strong C out of those choices. I'm feeling C.
I, I'm high five. Now wait a minute.
They, they cooked the, ah, darn it, dynamic. They made down negative.
They made down negative.
It's okay. It's our choice, it's their choice. But in terms of these selections, the negative is by far the two point nine two.
We're gonna pray for them.
Yeah, they, then why do you wanna be negative? Negative is just.
That to be positive. We're smiling.
And here's, in their defense, and I don't like to be in their defense, cause I like to always be right. If you're dealing with two dimensional motion, we have a projectile, it's sometimes nice to call up positive and down negative.
Yeah.
Cause you got both, you're having to deal with both, but you know, case they're all surrounded. C, when in doubt, pick C. If you were a good guess, you'd have done it. Whoa, number five, Cinco is for you. You will support. You people are very sound.
I'm gonna start with my force of gravity.
Ninety-six Newton box slides across a table. So you got it.
And that tries to make this problem easier, but what I've found, students get so used to M G, M G, M G. When they see ninety-six Newtons, they'll multiply it by ten before.
Could very happen. But when you see Newtons, Newton is already done, right? That is the weight. Then we got a sixty-five Newton force is applied horizontally and to the right. Sixty-five Newtons to the right. And the box accelerates to the right at three meters per second squared. So we get this thing. We already know there's a net force, cause it's accelerating. And we know the net force is in the direction of right. This is how much kinetic frictional force acts on the box.
I don't think my free body diagram is very good.
No, they, they kinda, well, we can get the other one. We could throw a force normal on there.
Ah, forgot. It's setting on something.
We can go ahead and wait with that and ninety-six Newtons. Here's where they didn't do us any favors. They gave us the weight, but remember Newton's second law is F equals M A. And we wanna find out what the frictional force is. And so we're gonna have to know. We're gonna have to know the mass in some form or another, cause we gotta know what the net force is.
Wow, is this really coming out?
Yeah, it's, I wish they would have made that a hundred and I would have ten, but you know, we gotta deal with, we gotta deal with.
Points, it's K G.
So we know we have an acceleration of three meters per second square and a mass of nine point six kilograms. And so F equals M A. We know what the net force is because we know a mass and an acceleration. Why would I want that though? Maybe we should, I like what, I'm jumping, I'm putting the cart ahead of the horse.
I'm still missing something. You haven't even marked me off yet.
No, we, I got.
Minus one.
Sometimes you get so excited about solving the problem.
I get so excited.
I just didn't put all the forces on there. Boom.
Although it should be a little short.
Oh, look at that correction in real time, in real time correction.
There we go. Get our little force of friction kinetic.
And so you look at, that's gonna scream the net forces to the right. And so if we were to sum that, we could actually not write an equation even. I would say sum of all the forces is equal to sixty-five minus F F K. We have to create room on our.
So the sum of the forces X would be equal to sixty-five.
Yep.
Minus F F K equals M A.
Yep.
Okay, I respect that.
And then?
We know that M was nine point six, so this is, I'm gonna get down here so that I'm not blocking that camera.
Killing it.
Sixty-five minus F F K equals nine point six.
Times three-ish.
And we can, it's curious. We got some multiple choice. I think we can probably.
Ballpark that?
Yeah.
Cause that looks about like thirty.
Looks very close to me.
Less than thirty for sure, which would throw us a little bit like, um, thirty-five over here, thirty, sixty-five.
Definitely not fifty-three, not ninety-six, not sixty-five. I'm going with D.
I'm feeling D. D is for. Well, whatever you want it to be.
Being called a dog is a good thing. You're not keeping up with social media.
No dogs. Alright, bro.
Hey, let's move on. Let's move on. This guy.
Number six, pick up sticks. That's for you guys. Looking like we're waiting. When's that train gonna get here?
Wish I knew.
If they gave me a kazoo, I might sound okay, but that's.
Hey, you're back.
Yo, yeah, alright, alright. We've got two masses tied to, fighting masses. Because that, they, they can't get apart. So three kilogram block, a five kilogram block attached by a, a strong rope or a rope. Two blocks sit on a flat table. No friction today. Uh, backs between the blocks or the surfaces of the table or anything. An applied force of magnitude F to the right is applied to the five kilogram block. What is the tension and the string that connects the two masses? Give your answer in terms of F.
And I feel like this is a problem people tend to over complicate. Cause I look at this and I admit, if it asked me to draw free body diagrams, I would.
But they'd be left amiss, really? Cause you've got, ah, man, what am I gonna do?
Because in the end, what is the net force to the system is whatever the F is pulling the box.
So we got a force F going to the right. We got a total mass of eight. So what I would think we would need to do is maybe find out what the acceleration is first.
Think we could do that?
Cause if we know, if we know force equals mass times acceleration, we have the, well, here's what we just asked the question. Does it make sense to you that the five kilogram block would have the same acceleration in three kilogram block, cause they're tied together?
They're connected together. One can't be outrunning the other.
So they're collectively, to the guy pulling, it looks like there's eight kilograms of the anchor around here. And so eight kilograms of mass acceleration, it's not gonna be a number. It's gonna be a ratio with force in a number. And so we actually have a one eighth F or F over eight is the acceleration. Now it's, we got the answer.
But I know what somebody's gonna do. They're gonna pick D, cause they're gonna be like, F over eight, yes.
Let me go back. It says, no.
What is the tension?
In the string that connects the two masses. And so we don't even worry about the tension that's accelerating a three kilogram mass. So let's draw.
So I know that that block is three kilograms.
Yeah.
Team's got a tension on it.
That's it.
So that's got to be equal to three times the acceleration.
F. There we have it. Three eighths of the F.
Please let me be right.
Yes.
Let me be right. Please let me.
Killing it. So one thing I like to share with you, uh, that, he's killing. I didn't celebrate that enough. You were so right.
I'm walking.
Joe, that's a marker drop. Uh, the force pulling that gets distributed evenly amongst the mass. And so they each get a proportional amount of the force equal to how much mass they bring to the, into the arena. And so there was eight total kilograms, five of the, of the components of force go to the five kilogram, the other three go to the three kilogram and therefore you get that beautiful three eighths of the force goes one and five eighths will go the other. Alright, question seven is you guys, we're gonna, we're going out. We've been, you've been sandbagging, so now you get to get, uh, kinda grow the, mow the grass.
Y'all go draw your, do your problem. Pushmower draw this.
Pushmower. I'm gonna take a sip of, uh, hydration.
Three, two, one. Alright, how'd you guys do with this push mower? Uh, that good, huh? Alright, Eric, go for it. I won't. Uh, that good, huh? All right, Eric, go for it. I want to see how this thing solves out.
All right, because this push, I'm gonna go ahead and put the whole mower on here.
Oh, man. It's a good looking mower.
All right, so we got this guy. He's happy to mow the grass. He's pushing the mower. And this is sixty degrees, uh, above the horizontal. And so I just looked at it from that perspective, that that's sixty degrees and he's pushing the mower. So part of the force is this way.
True.
I mean.
In the X direction.
And part of the force is pushing the thing down into the ground. And so two parallel lines cut biotransversal. This is also sixty.
That's what I'm looking at. Cause I was like, ooh, I really wanted to throw that sixty in.
And so if you think about this, here's our right angle. That's the adjacent side. So this is the force pushing times the cosine of theta, which would be sixty degrees. And this is gonna be force push downward is sine theta, which is also. We don't care about this one because you're gonna have the weight. All right, it's also gonna be a force normal. Those are gonna, we're not accelerating downward. We've got some ground down here. We're only accelerating this way. And so if we think about this, we knew that the sum of all the forces in this case, in the X direction is just. Well, it's always equal to mass times acceleration. So if we want the acceleration, the sum of all the forces here is gonna be F cosine of this theta with those sixty, ma. And so if we just divide those sides by N. Chuk, chuk. We'll get F cosine theta divided by M in our.
Select B.
So B should be it.
Sir, what he said.
Yes. Matt, sorry about that. But you know, that's real thinking and real physics. Don't think for a minute that we didn't work these cold. That's fun. You get a beautiful idea of what goes on as someone's thinking about physics broadly when you work something cold. All right. Uh, this is called an Atwood machine. Actually, this would be what I would call modified Atwood machine. The traditional Atwood machine would have two masses over a one pulley and they're both free to move vertically. In this case, we got one moving horizontally, one moving vertically. It's yours. Go ahead.
All right. Well, if we're taking a look, and the funny thing is, there's two ways of working this problem. But I'm gonna go and do something. One of those answers, it's not gonna be, like, I can go ahead, just looking at the problem.
Yep.
And we should probably also pause.
Was that?
And this is the time when you solve the problem. Are you guys still hanging out with her? She falling asleep yet?
All right.
So this is what's typically called a modified Atwood's machine.
I actually liked when we said, this is one inch or it's not gonna be, as it was a, it couldn't be B. And I think you're exactly right. It can't be B.
Why can't it be B? What's wrong with nine point eight? That solves everything.
A B, B is great when you're looking for weight, but sometimes not so great when you're looking for an acceleration of things that are tied together. And this crazy contraption.
Call that one. So there's no way it's nine point eight. Cause things not in free fall. There's this block working against it.
M two's saying, why do I have to drag M one? Now, what do I have to do?
I'm also looking, it's a frictionless table. It's, can I just ask you something, Eric? I, I'm, I can solve this problem so fast. Force net equals ma. Why can't I do this? What's creating the net force in this problem?
Uh, well, there's no friction. We've got what? An M one on top?
We've got an M two over here. There is no friction. I've got this going over my pulley. So realistically, I've got an M two G.
I think you could kill it if we're thinking that.
So if I'm looking at my system, the only net, the only thing applying a force to the system as a whole is.
M two G.
So could I say that my net force is M two G? And that's equal to the mass of my system, which is what? Ten and a five?
Yep, ten and five. M one plus M two.
Whoa, this is crazy. So in the end, I got five times ten. Check this out. I got M two, five times ten, that's fifty Newtons equals fifteen kilograms.
Yep.
Times acceleration.
Division.
Fifty divided by fifteen. There's my answer.
Yep. Fifty fifteenths. And if that was sixty fifteenths, the answer would be four, but it's not sixty fifteenths. It's fifty fifteenths, which is less than sixty. So it's less than four. So we got two possible choices. We're dancing around one another.
I know it's not three, cause three times fifteen, I can handle that. That'd be forty-five.
Yeah, and so maybe the next guy up there.
A.
I'm picking A.
A, okay, A.
A.
A it is, yes. Yeah, guys, this is a problem you're going to see. The easiest way to find it, just think about force net of the system, ma. The system is M one and M two, so that's your mass of your system. What's the only force making it move? It's this weight of the second object. And you can solve this one in thirty seconds or less.
Yep, this ma, this weight is, or this force of acceleration gets distributed over the entire mass. To this, it feels like this mass is M one plus M two. It feels like the mass is actually fifteen kilograms.
Now, this is neat. I could have thrown, let's say there was a, let's say there was a five Newton and friction force present.
Yeah.
This still wouldn't have been a bad problem to work, because then I would have just looked at it. If there was five Newtons of friction, I know that this thing, what we say, M two, this was sixty, right? Or fifty.
Fifty.
This was fifty Newtons. So if I was looking at F net for the system, I got fifty Newtons making it accelerate, five Newtons working against it. My system then has a net force of forty-five Newtons equals a mass of fifteen.
Oh, nice.
Those are them numbers.
And then, that's beautiful. I mean, just lots of ways to configure a problem to add another layer, right? This is another layer of difficulty. But also I think about this, it's another layer that lets you prove you understand physics.
Yeah.
Cause it, basically the whole premise of the entire AP one exam is to, hey, does this person sitting on the other side of this exam understand what they're talking about? Do they understand physics? Cause we're about to give you college credit. Cause they want you to understand it. In the grand scheme of things, you're opening doors. That's what we're doing today. All right, question nine, uh, little bit different, but a little bit the same, right? Looks like the same.
Frictionless tabletop.
Just we changed our focus. Tension in the rope.
Now wait a minute. Well, let's get rid of this five Newtons here. We don't need that. We're still frictionless. So.
We got an acceleration.
So we're looking for the tension on that object, right?
Yep.
Wait a minute. That tension is nothing but a force. So that force of tension has gotta be equal to ma.
Cause there's nothing resisting it.
What's the mass on that object? We didn't practice our weight time.
No, oh, we did kinda did.
Yeah, closing up. Matt, you got this.
That, that is the big guy. It's ten, it's ten kilograms. It's M one.
So M one is ten kilograms. I'm writing with a bad marker. So M one is ten, you say?
Our acceleration was three point three three.
Well, I like the math on this. If you said thirty-three point three, go to the kitchen.
Yes.
Get yourself some vanilla wafers and a glass of milk, cause you burned it.
I was gonna give him a tape five candy bar, one of those mini, they're delicious. Little pretzel, chocolate caramel mix. They're delicious.
Hmm.
Just, just enough time to eat one of those. As we move to the right answer, which was C.
I never had a doubt. Actually, the you know, in that look, thirty-three meter per second square?
Yeah.
Come on.
It was accelerating.
Yeah, but it was accelerated at three point three. It's supposed to be Newtons.
Ooh. That.
Be eye for the details.
You're killing it. You're killing it.
Has to be in Newtons. All right, roll us in. Question number ten.
Big block, a little block.
We're gonna sit here and arm wrestle while you guys work it out. And we're back. All right, guys. So how did y'all do? You know, I didn't even erase this while they were busy working that problem.
Pay no attention to the man behind the curtain. So here is one that can catch people off guard because there's not a rope or a string. We got surfaces. And so the force normal is gonna behave as if it were the rope or the string, which is kinda crazy, but you can probably think about the same.
So when I'm looking at this, can I kind of look at it like that question a little bit?
We're good. Or, or if you like to draw force normals, this might be an easier way. I, I'm fine with you doing that. Um, let me wrap my head around this. If a force of eighty Newtons is applied to the right of box A, what is the acceleration of the system as if there is no friction? So they're only.
This dumb.
Yeah. So there, there, it's, the acceleration's to the right. So there's A. A's gonna hit B. The one's four kilograms, one's ten kilograms. So they can't help that interact with one another. You got, and so when you push on A, by the very nature of their contact, you're pushing on B. So that eight, eighty Newtons is actually going to be pushing on fourteen kilograms.
So the net force on the system then is what?
Looks like it's eighty Newtons.
And that would be equal to the mass, which is the system.
Fourteen.
Fourteen.
Ten and a fo- four.
He's coming up with these numbers.
Some craziness.
Eighty divided by fourteen. There's your choices.
Yep, you can do process of elimination. We know some that could get rid of pretty fast.
Not two.
Not gonna be two.
Not gonna be twenty.
Don't think it's gonna be twenty either.
All right, I narrowed it down. You finish it.
It's gotta be A or B, baby. A or B.
Well, I know eight times fourteen is gonna be a lot more than eighty.
Yeah. Yeah. Cause you could think about this, if that were twenty, right, we'd keep, it'd be in the four range. And it's not, it's less than twenty. So it's, I'm feeling A. I'm feeling like A's gonna be the ticket.
I'm picking A. We're waiting.
Yes. You can't stop us.
Come on, come on.
And this time, they threw some signage at us, cause they said to the right was positive, I guess.
Unlike Beyonce, who said to the left, to the left.
Yep.
Beyonce works away.
In the box to the left. You have successfully traversed the whole gamut of multiple guess questions, multiple choice questions. And you're still with us. Or maybe you went to the kitchen and didn't come back. I hope you're still with us. And so now we get to look at some free response. We're gonna derive some equations, um, in a way that free response questions really need to be looked at.
Probably went and got their parents to watch this. This is better than anything on TV.
Yeah, my dad's never act like these characters. What's wrong with them? They are nothing but, just nothing but physics. We're alive with physics.
Hmm, live with physics.
Yep, derive an expression. You're supposed to be thinking about this. I'm gonna set the table, let them do the thinking. All right. So you're gonna derive an expression for each of the following in terms of M, mu static, force pull and theta. And so you gotta, A, you want the normal force exerted by the ground on the system. B, the force of friction exerted by the ground on the system. And C, the horizontal acceleration of the system. All you have is a boy pulling up on a rope. Sled's at rest, uh, across the flat. It's a heavy sled. He's pulling it from rest, which we know it's accelerating. That's the big thing. The sled has a load with a mass of M, which includes the dog, I guess.
But this is mu S.
Yeah. I'm, I'm getting mixed messages here, but I'm feeling like it's sliding.
This is confusing. It says he accelerate.
Yeah. So I'm feeling that should be mu K.
Yeah.
It's okay. We're gonna go with that slide. Get it? We're gonna let it slide. It's a sled, slide. The friction between the sled and the ground is mu K. The boy pulls with a constant force F along the rope and the rope makes an angle of theta with the horizontal surface of the ground.
Uh, now what's neat, we could have solved it as mu S and it just been the boy sitting there pulling, but not actually.
Doing anything.
Right. And that would have also been a neat problem.
Yeah, we would have, and it would have been solved. We could write it, we, our terminology would be mu K, so I guess. So let's let you think. Draw your free body diagram and we will be back with you momentarily.
Paper, rock, scissors. Who does this one? I forgot how to play the game.
I'm three. I smothered you, man. That was a rock.
Dude.
That was a, ready? One, two, three, shoot.
But who, who does it? Loser or the winner? I don't know how that game works.
Solitaries. None.
Three, three, shoot.
One, two, three, shoot. One, two, three, shoot.
Ah, I gotcha.
I recycle. You thought I was gonna go rock and you were gonna smother me.
Yeah, I did. I really thought.
All right, we gotta attack the free body diagram that we used earlier with the mower. Without, we're useful here because we got a sled, we're pulling up with a force of theta.
We got force of what? FP?
We got force FP with an angle of theta. Thanks for keeping me honest.
FP adding angle of theta.
And we are rocking on top.
We got what? We got a.
Downward force, it's a weight.
FG or MG. I like MG.
MG's killing it. We do have a force normal. We don't know what it is. We're about to figure it out. In this case.
Whoop.
We also have force friction.
And this is where we, the hard part is determining what did they bonus. If it's, if it's accelerating, then yeah, we've got a kinetic.
That's a beautiful free body diagram. And we, we're gonna deal with acceleration. But this is one that drives students nuts if they don't think completely about what they know about physics. Because that upward force has two components or that angle force, there's a force that pulls this sled to the right, which is gonna cause the acceleration. And there's also a force that pulls upward, that's gonna limit the interaction between the bottom of the sled and the ground, the snowy surface. And so in this case, the force normal is not gonna be the weight of the sled. It's going to be a component of the weight. It's gonna be a little bit less, cause as you pull upward, this interaction's gonna get less. So you're gonna have to write, we wanna write an expression that we can get the force normal exerted by the, so you wanna sum the forces in the Y direction. And I feel like it's gonna be zero. But we have one force pulling down, but we actually have two forces pulling up. We have, we have to go to components with this. We're about to get some components of the FP or we're gonna.
Wish I'd drawn that farther up, but.
Yeah, we can, that's your free body diagram. We're gonna pollute it now, okay?
Okay. I'm gonna have to take a knee, my friend.
Take a knee.
So we got what? Sum of the forces X, we'd have what?
We got a force P in the X direction, it's gonna be a cosine.
Theta.
And then we have a.
Minus.
Force friction kinetic.
And that would be equal to?
Mass times acceleration.
And then the sum of the forces Y, we have what?
We definitely have, which way you wanna call it. All right, I'll go that way. Force plus FP sine. And a little MG. These two force normal and FP up, which is FP sine theta contribute to the lifting of the sled up. This is the one down and there, there's no acceleration in that frame of reference, so it's zero.
Killing it.
You are killing.
This is what I would say. The physics is over.
Physics is done. As a matter of fact, we're gonna jump into the, the look and use our physics, which will be in our frame of view of the video.
Now, the only thing like I'm looking like, it wants us to find a formula for normal force, which we could do.
Solve it for force normal.
We're good there. But now it says derive expressions. Well, it didn't tell us to solve for anything specifically, did it?
No.
Okay, so we've actually.
We're there.
Yeah.
So let's take a look. Let's take a gander. So vertically, there is no acceleration, F equals ma equals zero. The weight equals force normal plus the force P sine theta.
So someone solved this equation for FN.
Yep. Um, that's all they, and then the final, they did, yes, at the bottom. And then force of friction, we know is a ratio between, we gotta write a force friction formula. Force friction kinetic is equal to mu kinetic force normal.
Times mu kinetic. And our normal force would end up being MG minus FP sine theta.
Killing it, killing it. And the last but not least, to say the net, um, we just put it, we basically know that force of friction minus the FP cosine of FP sine, FP cosine theta. Basically that last step there is equal to ma. We put our equation in for the force normal. We put our equation in for the net force. And we solve that for, I mean, for the, um, frictional force.
Yeah.
And we get.
All they did was they took this one, substituted it and solved for A.
Killing. As we said, the mass of the sled divides into the net force to give you the acceleration.
Bring me a real problem. Killing it. I'm gonna get this with Kool-Aid.
More, there's more Kool-Aid. Now a real true free response. It says draw your experimental setup in the space wherever you can get it. So this is a true flavor of an experimental design question where they give you a parameter. If you've done some laboratory work, it helps your thinking out quite a bit, cause your system of thinking is good. We're about to rack this up after this one. So we're seeing the end of the light of the tunnel. And so a student wants to determine the coefficient of static friction between a long, flat wooden board and a small block. Describe the experiment for determining the coefficient of static friction between the wood board and the block. You can use any equipment that you could commonly find in a physics classroom, a laboratory. You can think about your own if you've got some stuff in there. And then you're gonna describe the overall procedure, what you're gonna measure, the quantities you're gonna measure, and how you're gonna reduce experimental uncertainty.
Hmm.
Give enough detail so that another student could replicate the experiment. Give enough detail so that another student could replicate the experiment. And then the B part, derive an equation for the coefficient of static friction in terms of quantities measured in the procedure from part A. There you go.
You guys done yet?
I don't think they're done yet.
Okay.
This, and answers will vary, right, depending on how you approach this question, if we're gonna talk you through this. It's gonna be difficult to show.
And we're back, so.
Well, I was gonna.
I'm just curious, I wonder if you have a wooden bo, board at home. And look at that.
Yep.
We got a block.
Yeah.
So what are some ways some might could go about now solving this?
So one might be, if you had a way to measure the angle, right, you can measure the angle, you could gradually raise this until you reach the point where you reach the maximum angle where it about to slide, but doesn't, right, so you have to be careful. And then you have the angle at which it slides, and you know at that point, the component of the weight pushing it down the incline is exactly equal and opposite to the maximum static frictional force.
That'd be the easiest way.
Yeah, and you could do that.
But what if we wanted to get more than one run of that?
That would be difficult, unless you had a different planet to go to, it'd be really difficult to do that.
What if we did this?
Ah, even that, that would be difficult. That would give you more weight, but it really wouldn't give you a different angle, we'd get the, you know, it'd be difficult. One other way might be if you had a pulley, and you put a pulley on there, and you put the.
If only we had a pulley.
Yeah, you put this pulley on here. And you could hang some masses off the side here, you could put your block on there, and you could add mass to the block to increase the normal force, and see how the frictional force increased correspondingly. And you would know that because the coefficient of friction is a ratio, the force friction equals mu times force normals, right? Or the mu static is force friction divided by force normal, and you would be able to measure. You'd be able to measure this wheel right here. This M G, alright, is gonna cause a tension, that's gonna be opposed by the force friction static. And that's gonna reach the maximum, you're gonna keep adding mass to this until that just slides, and you're gonna record that value. And then to get the force normal, the block has a mass, it's mass times gravity, that's gonna be equal to your force normal, and you can add mass to this, and you can graph that, you can basically have some force frictions, you have some force normals, and you could get these values, you could plot them, right? You could have the force friction static here, maybe some force normal here, get a little scatter plot, with slope action, mu. Yeah, killing it. I think that'd be pretty good. That'd probably be the AP physics friendly one. Cause that's truly an experiment, you get multiple points to do it that way.
True, true.
Alright, next.
Knock, knock.
Who's there?
Interrupting count.
It's, it's, keeps coming, they just keep coming, can't stop it. Oh, a free response question continued, as if it had a sequel or a chapter two, or series, uh, season two. Now you've got a, looks like a big list of data, I'm gonna let y'all read that, and we're gonna, you're gonna actually use your reading comprehension skills and your thinking power to come up with some ideas, and we're gonna come back to you with what we think might be a good way to approach this. Don't even have a mask over there to put on, that would be disturbing, I don't wanna do no COVID fashion.
Let's take a look at this then, alright.
Oh, my goodness, here we are.
A physics class consisting of six lab groups. Oh, that's nice, we got a couple of data sets, some friction between a board and the block, nice, nice. Uh, we've got some coefficients of kinetic, four, five, four, six, four, two, four, three, seven, four. Do you remember that old thing from Sesame Street? One of these things is not like the other, one of these things just doesn't belong. Uh, that's kinda standing out, five, four, five, two.
Pan takes the detail, ooh, physics skill.
And yeah, and then yeah, two, three over there. Based on these data, what conclusion should the students be able to make about the hypothesis that the coefficients of static and kinetic friction are equal to each other? Well, according to that average, they're equal.
Averages are averages, right?
Numbers don't lie.
Yep.
But students sometimes have mishaps.
Sometimes outlier can skew the mean.
Please justify your answer of this outlier.
We don't want any skewed means in here, because that would really mess up a calculation.
A skewed mean or a meme? As in like I could see someone making one of us now, like, these guys are clowns.
A meme. And so in this case, if you were really going to pay attention to detail, you might realize that that point two, three is screaming, that that group didn't pay full attention to what they were supposed to do. They lost their way, and they didn't say, hey, group five, what about that point two, three? You're not, you're doing, do that again, repeat, you know what we also didn't do? Repeat the procedures more than once, it's the best way to minimize the error.
True.
And so that's what we're doing, one through six, but five need to repeat theirs one more time to make sure they dial it in, so.
How about this metal disc on D?
So.
It's glued to the top of the wood block, the mass of the block, this system is twice the mass of the original block.
So we ramped up the mass.
Coefficient of static friction between the bottom of the block and the board increased, decreased? So it'd be like, here is my block.
Yep.
And then we, we, we glue a block of metal on top of that here, we'll set my phone on top of it. Glue it, I don't think I wanna glue it.
No, don't be fun.
So does that change the coefficient?
I don't know what the glue means, but it's just made it heavier, it's got a lot heavier. And so what's going on here is, there's nothing in here that says, if you increase the mass, you change the coefficient of friction. As a matter of fact, if you were to look at, the way it works is the force normal increases proportionally the force friction. So it's gonna be no, there's.
No change.
Surfaces didn't change.
Well, guys, we've had the ball hanging out with you.
It's been wonderful.
We hope you learned something, we also hope you do well on the AP exam.
And we might be in another future video, so stay tuned.
Awesome, Sal.